Okay, guys, are you all ready? Are you good?
I'm good.
Okay.
Is Penny ready?
Hmm?
You ready?
I'm waiting for her to tell me we're live on YouTube.
Oh, waiting on her.
Yep, you're up.
All right. Called to order the Vermillion County Council meeting for October 20th. Please stand for the pledge.
Protestants to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, Mr. Costello.
Here.
Mr. Somerville.
Here.
Ms. Brown, here. Ms. James, in present. Ms. Furrie, here. Mr. Bose.
Here.
Mr. Weir.
Here.
All right. First up, we have approval of minutes for budget hearings on September 15th, 16th, and 17th. We also have minutes for our regular meeting on September 17th and a special meeting on September 30th. Are there any additions, corrections, comments on any of those?
Make a motion to approve the minutes as stated.
Okay.
A second.
I have a motion for Mr. Weir, a second for Mr. Bose, to approve all the minutes mentioned. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
All opposed, state no. Minutes are approved. Next on our agenda this evening is additional appropriations. And we have a few. The first additional is from the redevelopment commission. It has been advertised in three different funds. It has been advertised from Fund 1149, Economic Development, the General Fund, Fund 1001, or the Fund Certified Shares 9103. So it is just needed to be approved once for a total of $210,000. They're asking for $10,000 in professional services and $200,000 in demolitions. Professional services for structural engineer review of a building at 191 Maple in Dana, also houses the post office. The building is half owned by redevelopment. The demo is a grant match for a demolition of three buildings in Dana, 100 to 116 Maple, for which redevelopment has received an OCRE grant, and demolition of also the 155 Extension Street here in Newport. Certified shares? Or should we take a... We have a decent balance in economic development, 1149.
Okay.
Or certified either one would be my thoughts. I know those buildings in Dana are in great need of being torn down, so that grant match will help out a lot. Also, the one here in Newport, I think it's past its prime, too.
Is this all they're gonna need for this? Something I need anymore, or is this...
Well, 191, the post office building could be at some point coming back at. This is just to get the engineer to look at it and give us a report on whether it's... Let's see if we can tear down half the building. It's one building with two things in it. It should have never been lighted up that way. But this is enough to cover the three buildings that do... The commissioners wrote the bids, I believe, on the fifth days. I was going over the numbers. Total budget was about $580,000. They're just pestos in buildings. These are... In Dana, we have an interesting situation that one building is owned by redevelopment. It's the worst thing. But if you try and tear down one building, one of the buildings aren't very good, you have a domino. And so you're actually gonna tear down all three buildings because the other two buildings aren't very good to begin with either. It's cheaper in the long run to tear them all three down than it is to try and put them in between. That will cover, assuming the bids come in under the estimate, which is supposed to be $600,000. It will cover all of that. The building in Newport, we are gonna get... When I asked for that, we didn't know how much it was gonna be. We think we should be able to affect them for something important down there, which is we have a deal worked out with somebody who's gonna buy it and tear it down for half of what it would cost.
So is all this the grant match?
No, the about 150 of it, 160 of it is grant match.
And the rest of it's...
And the rest of it...
Okay.
Personal building demos are very expensive. The one across the street is, in some respects, not as bad because it is not connected to another building. So it's a little bit cheap to do, but it is very tall. And so the estimates for that were a lot higher than I thought they would be, but we went to a couple of people. That somebody has bought a building next to it, and they want that lot, and so they're willing to tear down that building and give them the lot, less than it would cost. Deal worked out with them. So this would cover demo here, three buildings in Dana. The post office building, you know, the one...
Does that have to have federal involvement with the post?
Yeah. Uh, the, which one?
The one you're talking about that's hooked to another building that has to...
Yeah, that one we got it. Well, it's ultimately federal.
Do they just lease it? Do they just lease it from the...
Oh, you mean the one from the post office?
Yeah.
They lease it only. So, yeah, it's, I don't know. I mean, Kelly, Kelly was just out there a couple of weeks ago with the engineer, and I haven't been in the building, but it's...
What if the whole thing's considered to be condemned? They're gonna have to find a new place for the post office?
Yeah, and we, I, we had a preliminary report from the engineer, and we've shared that with the post office, we've shared that with the owner of that house. But I haven't got the new report. And the county health department has been out there, too. We asked them to come out and take a look. These are all buildings, for the record, that went through, in one case, 15 years worth of tax. They're just, nobody buys them. They sit at the tax sale, they go cycle back through the tax sale, they just, nope. The reason nobody buys them at the tax sale, of course, is because they have negative... The county commissioner tried to give them away, basically.
We have to choose one fund?
Yeah.
Just one?
You could split it, but the balances and, I mean, if we can take it out of one, would that be okay?
What's the preference? Anyone have a particular preference on it?
Redevelopment?
Yeah, either the Economic Development Fund or the Certified Shares.
Certified Shares.
Because redevelopment's funded through economic development. Which both are income taxes.
We can use the Certified Shares for anything, relatively speaking, whereas maybe the Economic Development Fund may be more appropriate since it's in line with that particular fund anyway, so I don't know.
Yeah, Certified Shares is kind of like a general fund, but it's funded from income tax versus property tax. Or the General Fund's property tax, and then Economic Development is also a part of the income tax.
I think sometimes we just, we look at Certified Shares for other reasons that might, might not be able to use the 1149 for.
Makes sense.
You know, if you draw too much from it, I don't know.
I'll make a motion to use the 1149, the Economic Development Fund, for this specific additional appropriation of $210,000 for the demolition and professional services needed.
I would say that. Do we have a balance for that fund, Chance?
147...
I have a motion for Mrs. Furrie, a second for Mr. Costello, to approve an additional appropriation from Fund 1149, Economic Development, in amount of $210,000 in total. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
All opposed, state no. Appropriation is approved.
Does, I guess I forgot to ask, well, once the lots are vacated, are the buildings or structures, is it, is sellable at that point?
No, actually, the OCRE grant comes with several... But you can, if you wanted to sell, if somebody wanted to build on it, you would have to go to them.
Okay.
But that's only for a few years. But they don't want, in their, in their minds, they envision somebody coming in and tearing down a building and then being able to build something on it that's gonna be a downtown terror over something, right? Where there's new hotels and things being built. So, I tried to explain to them.
This is Dana. This is probably not gonna have any hotels.
Probably not an issue. So, they told us, look, if you get something, just come to us, we can get away with it. So, this is office, the grant is from the office of community, and we're all affairs open, which is ultimately federal money, but they have a wide elimination grant. This is the first time, I think, we've gotten one, plenty at the county. The city has gotten a warrant to tear down the old uni middle school, to some people, high school, and the old bowling alley, Main Street, will be destroyed.
Hopefully, it may attract a business or something.
I don't know, you know, I mean, you're not gonna, nobody would take it on as it is.
Sure.
So, the town is building a garage behind it. Because one of the buildings has been torn down, it's a town road.
Directly on the right-hand side as soon as you get to town?
Yeah, that's the building that's coming down. Someone's got a mural, an early file of it, or whatever's left of the wall. But that wall's already started, the top row of bricks is falling down.
It's unfortunate to lose buildings, but at the same token, it's an impossibility at this point.
They actually did have, Mike Walbers, you're going to look at that a few years ago to see if it's salvage.
Anything else? The next additional appropriation we have this evening is from the Commissioners' Court, from County General Fund. They're asking for $10,000 additional for overtime. Overtime being paid up.
Make a motion to approve. I know, I don't like it.
Yep, second?
I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion for Mr. Weir, a second for Mr. Somerville, to approve $10,000 additional to overtime from the Commissioners' Court. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
All opposed, state no. Appropriation is approved. The next additional appropriation is for the amount of $20,000. It is from the jail, for the jail water. It is also coming from the General Fund. This is for the increases in the water bills. They're hoping this covers it for the remainder of the year.
So am I.
Yeah.
I motion to approve the additional for the $20,000 for the jail water.
I'll second.
I have a motion for Mrs. Furrie, a second for Mr. Bose, to approve $20,000 for jail water out of the General Fund. Any further discussion?
I'd like to state that we have taken this under advisement for next year's...
Yeah.
Budget, along with the overtime as well.
Yep. Those have been frequent ones lately.
Yeah. Seems like every month.
Anything else? All right. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
All opposed, state no. Appropriation is approved. If you'll skip the next page, that's a transfer. There's actually one more additional behind that. The last additional tonight is for the amount of $16,199.03. It is coming from the Platt Book Fund. It's not one we often appropriative, but this is to pay for the transfer books purchased to update the transfer books for the last couple of years to the current. These are for the books. He's also included the invoice in the back to show the book cost. It's like the binders and books.
Paper's expensive.
These are physical books?
Yes.
Not electronic?
How often do they have to be done?
Like, to order the books or keep, like, the records?
Keep them out.
The records are continual, but it's been a while since I could do order books.
Are those the large?
It's a rest on the... Yeah, they have, they have big metal things, you take, they're pretty old school. They weigh less.
Make a motion to approve.
Second?
I have a motion for Mr. Weir, a second for Mrs. Furrie, for an additional $16,199.03 for the Platt Books, from the Platt Book Fund. Any further discussion?
Just one question. Just looking at the each binder. It says, like, Clinton City Township or Fairview Township. Is that the wording, is that correct? Because there's no Fairview Township. Something can be changed, or does it need...
I don't know, I saw it the other day.
I mean, I didn't know if it's a legal matter, I mean, if you have a... Yeah, but I don't know if it was a legal matter of being a record, official record, having the wrong wording on it.
I think it was just a...
So, did you say Fairview? Well, there's a Fairview on here on the page. Yes, but it's Town of Fairview Park, it's not Fairview Township. Two different.
Okay.
And then it says Clinton City Township, which is no such thing.
They have a book for each township, and then if you have any corporate city or town, they have a book for it. But I think there was a communication.
That's how they're made, that's how they get them?
I didn't ask you how the options are. They were put the pages in.
Okay. I, I just... I think it's a sticky tape, and put on there and rewrite it. Wipe it out. That's my only question.
All right. Any further discussion? No? All right, all those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
All opposed, state no. Additional is approved. Okay, and then if you'll flip back to the previous page, we'll move on to the next item tonight, which is the transfer fund. The first request is from the probation department. They are asking to transfer $1,000 from maintenance agreements and $600 from criminal records, for a total of $1,600 into conferences and... They are needing this for their APPA training registration fees.
And that's just reporting on that?
Yes.
Yes. Sorry, yep, I was reporting on that. And we have...
Is that one supposed to meet with the others?
Yeah, the other ones came in later.
Oh, okay.
I think they came in this morning.
Rip that out here.
There is another reporting only. It is Commissioners' Court. They are transferring 500 from training and seminars, 3,000 from equipment and maintenance, 1,500 from telephone, and 1,500 from electric and natural gas, for a total of $6,500 into repairs and maintenance. They are moving these funds to cover the purchase of two replacement solar panels for county sirens.
This actually should be, I think back before my time, the EOC was in the Commissioners' Court.
I wondered that.
We have, again, it's been changed. The department number is 133. It says Commissioners' Court. It should say 133 EOC, or however they have it.
Okay.
Worded. So it's actually out of the General Fund, but it is actually out of his budget, which is Department 133. And that one's just a reporting on the...
Yep, that one's reporting on the... And then the last one is, requires a vote this evening, is also for EOC. They are asking to transfer $800 from gas, oil, and lube into radio upkeep to cover the purchase of one new radio.
I'll make a motion to move the $800 from gas, oil, and lube to radio upkeep to EOC.
I'll second.
I have a motion for Mrs. Furrie, a second for Ms. Brown, to approve the transfer of $800 from gas, oil, and lube into radio upkeep. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
All opposed, state no. The transfer is approved. The next item is the Treasurers Monthly Report. Is there any questions, comments on that report? All right, moving along then. Next up on our agenda is the Quarterly Column Report. It is for the third quarter of 2025. Thank you for adding those columns on it. Any questions or comments on overtime? All right, well, we do not have any old business this evening and new business. First, we have our adoption of our budget hearing for the 2026 Budget Ordinance, 2025-19. We also have the 2026 Budget Hearing for the Solid Waste, 2025-20. We have ordinance or resolution for appropriations and tax rates. This will be ordinance resolution number 2025-19. Following will be the 2026 Budget. Fun Casino Riverboat has an adopted budget of $37,500, with an adopted tax levy of zero and adopted tax rate of zero. The General Fund will have an adopted budget of $10,482,905, with an adopted tax levy of $9,380,000, adopted tax rate of 0.9066. $492.
$492?
Or $82.
Or $82.
Well, I, I, maybe it didn't change it, but I, when I pulled up on paper right now, it's $500.
Okay, for the General?
Yeah. $10,506,905. I know I made those last changes.
At 5:00.
At 5:00. And I thought I checked, and I, I don't know, maybe it printed.
It didn't update it.
Yeah, I, I, it did update, I'm looking at it on point four.
Okay.
Can you read that again, Scott?
Sorry, $10,506,905,000.
Okay.
$6,000?
Yeah. $10,506,905,000.
We will have to print it in a few weeks. And there was a small change to highway.
I was gonna say. All right, let me read the rest of it, and we'll correct me if there's... So the General Fund will be an adopted budget of $10,506,905, with an adopted tax levy of $9,380,000, with an adopted tax rate of 0.9066. The 2015 Reassessment Fund will have an adopted budget of $341,857, an adopted tax levy of $122,984, with an adopted tax rate of 0.0119. The Highway Fund will have an adopted budget of $2363,250? $352,000. Okay.
That's $2,352,750.
$2,000,000? So the Highway will have an adopted budget of $2352,750, an adopted tax levy of zero and an adopted tax rate of zero. The Highway Special Fund will have an adopted budget of $838,650, the adopted tax levy of zero and an adopted tax rate of zero. The Local Road and Street Fund will have an adopted budget of $280,000, adopted tax levy of zero and an adopted tax rate of zero. The Cumulative Bridge Fund will have an adopted budget of $680,000, adopted tax levy of $420,937, and an adopted tax rate of 0.0371. The Health Fund will have an adopted budget of $243,999, and an adopted tax levy of $157,697, with an adopted tax rate of 0.0152. The Emergency Telephone System Fund will have an adopted budget of $568,462, adopted tax levy of zero and an adopted tax rate of zero. The Plan Commission Fund will have an adopted budget of $7,000, adopted tax levy of zero and an adopted tax rate of zero. The Cumulative Capital Development Fund will have an adopted budget of $245,000, adopted tax levy of $218,978, and an adopted tax rate of 0.0193. The Economic Development Fund will have an adopted budget of $275,350, an adopted tax levy of zero and an adopted tax rate of zero. The total adopted budget will be...
Uh, $16,000, yeah, that's okay. I got here, $16,377,473 for those funds. Total adopted levy will be $10,300,596,000. And the tax rate will be, adopted tax rate will be 0.9901. I, that levy will, if you approve this, will be what our levy will be within a few bucks. That is $50,000 under the max, so we did keep it under the max. The adopted tax rate, I expect it to be cut down to IDLGF, 0.9078, be my prediction. We, I used, we have to use the certified net assessed value to determine the tax rate. And our certified net assessed value grew this year. But just in case there's a mistake, and this has happened one time years ago in this county, where there was a mistake in the C-HAB that was caught, and so the actual assessed value is less than what was used to formulate the budget. And so that resulted in, you can't have a tax rate that's higher than what you adopted. So, I, that rate is higher than what I think it will be. I think it will be, based on the certified net assessed value, 0.9078, which will make, it's six years in a row. nine zero seven eight, which will make it six years in a row. Rates on that. Not by much, but it was, it was ten cents higher six years ago. These are the funds that get property tax dollars and that's why they're at the top. I don't know why some of them don't get property tax dollars.
Highway doesn't.
I know, but the L G F still has it up there. It's just odd.
There's certain ones, D L G F.
By trying to change the constitution or something, it's.
So these numbers are on Gateway and so we make sure they match in Gateway to our numbers and then our numbers will also then again match to the law assistance of the courthouse. Is there a motion to accept the twenty twenty-six budget ordinance, twenty twenty-five dash nineteen?
I'll make a motion to accept the resolution ordinance, twenty twenty by nineteen.
What's that?
I have a motion for Mrs. Furry, a second for Mr. Somerville to accept the twenty twenty-six budget, which is ordinance resolution number twenty twenty-five dash one nine. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
All opposed, state no. Twenty twenty-five dash nineteen is approved. We also need to approve the adoption of the solid waste management. This will be ordinance resolution number twenty twenty-five dash twenty. They only have one fund. It is special solid waste management. The adopted budget is sixty-nine thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars with an adopted tax levy of zero and an adopted tax rate of zero. There's a lot more.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
I have a motion for Mr. Weir, a second for Mrs. Furry, to adopt ordinance resolution number twenty twenty-five dash twenty for the solid waste management. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
All opposed, state no. I'm sorry, Scott. I just found your new copy.
Oh.
That you gave me.
Black and white.
I used the one from the packet. Sorry, you did give it to me. It was under the Baker Tilly.
It's good test.
You did.
You did.
I failed. Okay. Next item on new business is the Baker Tilly. They sent us an engagement letter for agreed, for agreement on related services. It's not something we have to do tonight, but we wanted to kind of bring it up that we may need some help in our future projections of revenue, estate. The S B one bill has reformed property tax revenue and income tax revenue over the next several years. They're on a scale, it'll begin, property tax has already started, it'll finish ideally in twenty thirty-one, and then the income tax will completely change in year twenty twenty-eight. So Baker Tilly has offered to do some analysis for us. There's the local income tax analysis, a countywide parcel by parcel. And then we've also talked about possibly doing a comprehensive, comprehensive financial plan. That's not necessarily directly related to the tax income, but it's something we've discussed in the past, so they included it in this scope of work to be considered. So if you would at least take the time to kind of review that and decide, kind of review it and look at it and see what you think about it. And also, I think if we do the financial plan, that's something we need to consult with the Commissioners on. I think we need to get a plan for our county of what we like to afford in the next several years.
Yep.
Before we ever attempt to like hire Baker Tilly to do it. So just some thoughts on that.
Good idea.
I'd like to set up some kind of work session with them and go over this and that and see if we.
Be nice to have some kind of meeting with them in some form. See what we can do on that. Our last item of new business tonight is Apex. They are here this evening. I'm not sure who gets the pleasure of speaking first, but.
We have the slides right here, Penny, or is that? As we get started, I'll just start with some introductions. My name is Megan Zampiran and I'm the lead developer on the project. Also here today is Kim Doherty, my manager and Vice President of Development, and Jack Elders, who is our Public Engagement Manager. I'm going to hand it over to Kent to talk a little bit about Apex, but we'll, the slides are here, we can't get them.
They're gone.
Oh, there we go.
It's slow here. Everything's slower.
Is it okay to have the little slides beside it or you want it all big?
Yeah, if you can make it big, that'd be, if that is okay.
What?
It's not, it's not the only way. Is that little screen down at the bottom right?
Do you think there's a screen down? I was thinking there's a.
Doesn't it look like a little monitor?
Yeah.
What's on monitor?
Slide show.
All right, slide.
There we go. Click for the next one.
I can't, I'm not that cool, not even near.
My mouse isn't going that far either.
No sunglasses.
It didn't go up there though.
Oh.
No, it's not that slow.
It's not that slow.
Yeah, there we go. I can see it really nice.
Everybody look at Penny.
We're gonna come sit with you.
I can see it, okay?
I think it's fine.
Well, now I can't get out of that, so.
Well, in the meantime, we'll just get going.
Yeah.
You guys have seen some of this before, but thanks for having us. We'll do this as quickly as we can, get folks home. My new public comment coming up. So Apex Clean Energy, we're based in Charlottesville, Virginia. We're a company of about four hundred and fifty people at the moment. Most of those folks, about half those folks are in Charlottesville, the rest are around the country where we develop projects. We develop wind energy projects, solar projects, green hydrogen projects, battery storage, do some transmission work. Increasingly, we're doing anything under the heading of energy, including looking into natural gas projects and S M Rs, small modular reactors. We do a number of things within this industry. We primarily develop projects, so that's what the three of us do. We come out, we cite projects, we do a number of studies to make sure that the projects are feasible, both environmental studies, economic studies, technical studies on the grid. And then hopefully we get a project mature enough so that we're kind of to the point where we are now, coming to the county with a permit. We also build projects. We have a very, very crackerjack construction management team that works with eight or ten large national contractors who do these kinds of projects. We don't do the actual work, we manage the work, the white constructions of the world. They're partners of ours. Third and final, we own and operate. As you've heard us say before a little bit, this is a newer part of our business, new being twenty twenty-one. Before, we were developers only. We would develop projects, get them to a point where they were saleable to a utility or a private company, and then hand over that project. We usually would build the project and hand it off when that was complete. Now, our goal is to own and operate as many projects as we can. And we, every year, we're adding to that. Have a few gigawatts of projects now that we operate. What does that mean to operate? So we have folks on site for both solar and wind projects. We have operations and maintenance buildings that we build. Not a whole lot of jobs with solar, not gonna sugarcoat that, just doesn't, unfortunately, just doesn't take a whole lot of work to get one of those things up and running and operating. We also have a remote operations center in Charlottesville. It's a very sophisticated facility where highly trained folks monitor every project that we own and operate throughout the country, constantly, twenty-four seven. Can't see the map, but we're all over the country.
Yep, you can, if you tell me what you want to play.
Oh.
Just use a slide, they just will not be the full screen.
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine. Here's our map, so.
Okay, but I'm like, when's he gonna want me to turn?
Sorry, we're all over the country. You can see, if you can see that, we've got corporate projects in Texas and Oklahoma, sort of high plains, and also a lot of projects in the upper Midwest, so Indiana, Michigan, Ohio, and a lot in Minnesota and Iowa. So we are not a regional, we're a national company. Some of those numbers you see there, I won't, I'll just point out a couple, two million acres under lease, so I like to mention that number because that is a lot of acres to manage and we're paying all those people every quarter or more frequently on those. It takes a significant amount of infrastructure to administrate, administrative infrastructure to do that. So my point is we're not three people on a pickup truck. We have a large organization, well organized. I have nothing to do with the management of those acres, thank goodness, because that would be a disaster, but we're very good at what we do when it comes to. Any please? Next slide please. Oh, sorry. Real quick, this is a slide you haven't seen. So we have to sell the power in order to finance these projects, every developer does. And this is just a quick shot of some of the people, some of the corporations we have done business with, and as you can see, it's a pretty impressive list from, you know, I wouldn't even list them, but all, pretty much all companies, either Fortune five hundred or Fortune one thousand companies that are seeking renewable energy for cost benefits, generally for cost benefits.
I recognize eBay.
I changed screens, you missed it, okay.
McDonald's, to Cargill, to Amazon, to Facebook, you name it. Now here are some of the banks we've done business with, so we have to, we generally have to do construction financing on the projects. Oh, no, sorry, this is utilities, I take it back. These are some of the utilities. So the first slide was just the corporate partners and these are now the utilities. We have sole power too, or sole projects too in the past. Couple next slides, we just wanted to throw in here. I think there is still a narrative that projects like this are green new scam, whatever you want to call it, these are boondoggles that are highly, just the only reason we're doing it is to get tax credits. Not true. This is a shot from CenterPoint, formerly Vector Energy in Indiana, that shows their I R P. So every, every utility has to submit to the state regulators an integrated resource plan, I R P every year. And the next couple of slides, just give you a quick look at where CenterPoint was. In twenty twenty-three, their expectation was, sorry, I don't know if you don't mind just going right back to that.
Back to the other one?
Yes, ma'am.
Sorry.
Sorry, I led you on there. Eighty-five percent coal, small amount of wind, solar, small amount of natural gas. And you can see by twenty thirty where they anticipate their load to come from. Whether it looks just like that or not, who knows? But the point is, this is what they have presented to state, Indiana state regulators, high number of natural gas, wind, and solar. What that doesn't take into account is what might happen with nuclear. So that's a, that's a piece of that pie that might slide in there in the next few years. And then Penny, if you don't mind, go to the next one.
Would that be like small nuclear sites, the micros or is that?
All the, really. I mean, there's a real, there's a strong push for it right now, but it's probably not something that happens the next few years, maybe ten. This is from Duke and it's a little more complex, but what you see on the top, firm winter resource, you see, so what firm resources is just, renewables are not a firm resource. They're intermittent resource. They complement firm resources. But you can see how they're moving to twenty twenty-three from a firm resource, fifty-eight percent coal, seventy-one percent natural gas. But the mix, the entire mix of energy resources, natural gas, solar, again, will look just like that, time will tell, that's a long way out. But I just wanted to share those as a way of illustrating that this solar project, if we can get approved and get it built, will absolutely be a vital part of Indiana's energy infrastructure.
You said those are from Duke?
That's Duke. So with that, I think I'm gonna turn it back over to Megan to talk about the project.
Yeah, all right, Penny, next slide. So Brulets Creek Solar is a two hundred megawatt solar project located in Vermillion County. We started development on the project in two thousand nineteen. We are currently targeting a commercial operations date of April twenty twenty-eight with construction to begin in early twenty twenty-seven, and we have forty-seven land owner agreements signed this date. Next slide, please. Looking at the broader economic benefits this project will bring to the county, we worked with Baker Tilly to conduct a tax analysis of Brulets Creek Solar. As you know, Baker Tilly is a well-respected firm who also works with the county on economic matters. Brulets Creek will be a two hundred and, two hundred and seventy million dollar taxable investment for Vermillion County. According to the analysis, that means twenty-three million in new property tax revenue over a thirty-year life of the project and a proposed five million economic development payment as county revenue. Next slide. Additionally, we have proposed a two hundred thousand dollar community fund for St. Bernice with twenty thousand given each year for thirty years, so an estimated seven hundred and eighty thousand. Once operational, a total of one hundred and nineteen million in operational payments will be made to landowners. Additionally, over five hundred thousand have been made in pre-construction payments with over four hundred thousand scheduled for future landowner development payments. Apex has spent over fifty million in private equity to date on this project. Next slide. Actually, that's.
Yeah, we, we've been very lucky to be able to give out as many funds as we have for the life of Brulets Creek Solar right now. And I just wanted to quickly announce who won our grants for this past round. One being Vermillion County Emergency Management Agency, St. Bernice Fireworks, South Vermillion and Middle School, fifth grade science class, that was for milkweed and butterflies, it was really cute. American Legion Post one oh eight, and the Vermillion County Foundation. All five had really excellent applications and we're excited to be able to provide the funds for this round. The long list is the accumulation of sixty-six grants. We've given out a hundred and forty, or a hundred and forty thousand dollars so far in community grants so far for the project itself. So my assumption is we'll probably do another round maybe early next year, once we start the new year fresh, but otherwise. Penny, if you don't mind, go to the next one. Finally, good jobs close to home. I know Kent had mentioned the jobs aren't, you know, or there's two to three jobs specifically on the project once it's actually constructed, but during the operator, the construction portion of this project, it's around for four hundred jobs that will be supported during the time of construction specifically. And we're lucky enough to be able to use white construction as the contractor for this, so it'll be the ones managing this, the construction site. And then we'll also host a vendor program as we describe it. Our vendor program will reach out to as many local contractors for different needed things in the project, and so we'll have it at an event so we can all, you know, get together. We'll do a nice presentation and be able to kind of introduce ourselves. We'll do a nice presentation and be able to kind of introduce ourselves if they don't know who we are already. So otherwise, Megan, do I take the?
Yeah. Just to give an understanding of where we are with the timeline of the project, we filed our special exception use permit with the zoning administrator and are targeting it to be on the November or December BZI agenda. Once approved, we would then work on obtaining state and the link permits, again, with anticipated construction beginning in early 2027. Next slide. That's pretty easy. This is, if you wanted to see our application, you can click onto our website there, and we've loaded the full application package for everyone's review. I know that it was down today. I think it was down. I went to go to it too, I think because of all the Google stuff that was going on with AWS. Right? I couldn't get it on it either.
Yeah, I probably did this afternoon.
You did?
Yes.
I had several hiccups with several different.
What was going on?
The link to their application. I have a hard copy, but they also have the link. It wouldn't.
So I was going to say, there were no one talking about it.
Yeah, I didn't even think about that one when we were talking.
Why isn't everyone having problems today?
I could.
If I have about two internet problems in the morning, I'm done.
Shut it off. Glad to know it wasn't just my computer. I was ready to can it.
That's our presentation. We opened it up. If you all had any questions, can pause there if there were any.
One of the questions I've heard is space on the transmission lines. You have your spot on the transmission line is?
Correct. So we have a full executed, what's called GIA, generator interconnect agreement. And that just means that we have space on the line that Keoga to Sugar Creek, the 345 line, that's where we are going to be going into. So our substation is on 1300 South, and we have gotten through the whole racket to get that interconnect agreement.
Is that an easy agreement to get?
No. It's a long process, and it actually, it really governs our timeline. And because of MISO, you name it, COVID, anything with MISO, backing them in, MISO is who governs this grid. So that's who we have to comply with their schedules often. And, but to your question, we have received that interconnect agreement.
How much capacity is left on that line after you guys? I mean, how much more solar can actually come into the county?
I think one of the comments to go along with what you're saying is that there were some who may feel that there could be just an overwhelming amount of solar generation projects that would quote, you know, blanket the county or whatnot. And my comment back has always been, I don't really think that you can put that many megawatts on the system. And so I would assume that any future projects would almost self-govern, you know, that there can only be so many, and then you're done, I suppose.
That's kind of what I was asking. I mean, how much more capacity does the county have for solar?
Or any kind of?
Well, there is green energy, yeah.
How many other companies are looking right now up here that you know of?
Well, we all have only heard that from y'all, and that's seven or eight.
Right. Pattern is the one I know.
But is that a race? Is it a race to get there, or is it seven or eight can do this? It doesn't matter to me. I mean, I'm just saying it's more energy is better.
It's a good question, and it is, I think, the, at the end of the day, the answer is, it does self-regulate because if there's no capacity, when I say there's no capacity, if you wanted to pay hundreds of millions of dollars to upgrade the line, sure, there's tons of capacity, but.
But that kind of exceeds the.
What we have currently, I mean.
Yeah. We could look into, we could ask our transmission team to say, what's in the county? There's the two currently. The two 345 kilovolt lines that Duke owns that go north and south, and there's probably, I don't know if there's other 345 KV's. We have recently been directed by our transmission team to only prospect projects that tie into 345 KV lines because there's commercial reasons, there's technical reasons and commercial reasons, there's capacity generally on them, and we can get that power more widely dispersed so that we can get a higher price. We had an interconnect right across at the, at the Duke substation, I think it's Duke.
It's Clinton, the Clinton substation.
Clinton.
But it's Duke.
It is Duke. Where Pattern was also looking, it's 138 kilovolt, and we pulled our, we pulled our position from, from MISO for that one, mainly because we couldn't get to the point of interconnect, which was owned by a family that didn't want to work with either us or Pattern. So that essentially solves the long story. We built. So to get back to the original question, yeah, you cannot, if there's not capacity, you can't put a project. And it takes five years to go through the studies to make sure there is capacity. So it's not, when you said it's a race, it's kind of a race, but it's a really slow race.
Well, yeah, but I mean, ultimately, it's.
Yeah.
Who gets there first or.
Who gets there first, but then you're reading, so it's not as if you get there, you're in, and then you can build. It's five years.
What perspective? We filed with MISO in 2019, and we received our GIA in 2023. And that, I think that was actually pretty.
That's pretty fast, yeah.
But that's, yeah.
And the more people who are applying, the harder it gets.
But 345 KV lines are, they're not everywhere.
Yeah.
I mean, by any means, which is why this area is perhaps unique, the terrain, the fact that there are such connections. Is that why Vermont County gets looked at just for, I mean, there's all, I know there's hundreds of.
There's less than a dozen of them.
Yeah, I mean, but having the transmission lines kind of help guide the projects to those areas, I would assume, which is why I've kind of said this area, all the way from, say, Gibson County, Indiana, all the way north to Gary, Indiana, is a city. Those transmission lines run that corridor, so it's a unique area, but.
There may also have been some betting that Duke was going to close that plant, which would have opened up a lot of capacity.
Gibson?
Uh, so the fact that that, that was not anything we were betting on, but the fact that it's not closing, which is a good thing, that it can convert that to natural gas.
With more capacity, actually.
With more capacity. So that is another thing to take into consideration for all of.
But I mean, there's always the potential that could go in a different direction or change. I assume, and like I said at the last meeting, that's, I believe that they're going to do that, but I also know that things can change for anyone, so.
And actually, the Duke IRP, they have mapped it out essentially. So you can see their plans and their specs, it's actually a really cool document to read through about Keoga specifically. And they'll go into the depths of like what their intentions are there. I can't speak for the details, but if you want to read it, I can always send it to you as well.
I guess we didn't answer the question right. You don't know the answer.
To the capacity on the grid?
Long question.
I'm going to get, there's some really smart electrical engineers that use way better than I do.
Okay.
So I'll get that info for you, and we have your contact info, I'm sure, or somewhere I can find Toddison at over key.
We can also, also tell you, actually, I just thought of it, is that we can, it's public information, so it's not confidential. We can tell you how many applications there are.
Oh, yeah.
Within the county for what type of fuel source, whether it's solar, natural gas, whatever. That's public, so we can share that with you. You know, so for instance, if developer, whomever is up in the northern county sniffing around, they haven't applied to the grid, you can bet you've got five or six years before, because you have to get the land first in order to apply.
I would like that information, and I'd also like the information you spoke of too.
Seems like a lot of time and money to invest in just getting to this point.
Yeah.
You mentioned the tax revenue that, I wrote it down, is $23 million in new property taxes over the 30 years. I'd heard before that might be possibly the third largest taxpayer we'd have in the county. Is that correct?
Yeah, $23 million is assumed with the abatement. And yes, that's even with the abatement. And I believe would be the third largest on day one of a project being operational, not 10 years down the road.
Could the state change that too? Unhealthy tax.
Yeah.
They change that for everybody.
Yep.
I can ask you a question. What do you guys do for your security and power of thefts impacting you guys? Because I know AT&amp;T has been getting hammered on ability thefts, or has got tables, and does that want to impact our manpower, taking calls to the.
Go to, how old you get, as you mean, Jason. Yeah, we've, so part of our overall plan, we do have our response plan, but also, as I say, someone in-house who did the detail of these specific things, and also the spence, or I believe fence stand up to 10, 7.
2.7.
Okay. You want? Well, I was just, I think we do, so Jason Conley, who's our safety guy, will be the first, he'll be the face of the project in terms of first responders. And so we have not had a lot of theft, I mean, we manage five or six solar projects at this point. I have not heard of theft being a big thing. Dispense, it's not lit. The, so I, I have not heard any news of that.
I was going to say, we sat down with Mark O'Hare and Jim Miller.
Jim Miller Jr.
And there you go. So we have sat down to go over that emergency action plan, and so everybody is sort of well versed as we move along, and a copy of that too is in the, in the application that we've gone through right now.
At least that holiday accounting just overwhelmed us on everything that would take place.
I would caution thieves not to steal anything from a live power system.
They do.
Yeah, I know, but I mean, it's not smart.
You know where you find them.
You'd be surprised. The stuff that's there isn't that overly expensive. It's something you can, by any means, it's not that.
I would suppose that any type of, you know, if the county starts to see development in the future of any type of industrial development, commercial development, issues like that will come up naturally with more residents, more homes, more businesses, more anything, and it will ultimately probably result in the increase in officers needed, things like that. It'll just, it's a natural, you know, bigger, bigger counties with more things have more police officers, it's just natural order of it, I suppose.
Fence is a requirement or a choice?
Requirement.
It's not chain link. We're proposing sort of ag fence, welded wire, it's four by four, six by six posts, the wooden welded wire, it's a little, little more, it's not chain link with barbed wire.
Or static weekly.
Electrify it or something? Well, goodness, I mean, people.
If you do, can we put cameras out?
Be there.
Just to watch. Sorry.
Animals, animals out. Keep the honest personnel. You're not going to stop. I mean, a chain link fence is same, it's just, you know, millions of dollars to fence it.
It's just for liability. For like us and that other person, if somebody moseyed into animal or person, it could be, we could be liable for that injury.
All right.
Yeah.
There'd be long-term employment for people to maintain those fence rows and.
Correct. Yeah, correct. This project will have an operations and maintenance facility on site, and in that, that will house, it's roughly two to three jobs, again, not a ton of jobs, but that's where we'll have a station.
Generally, they contract out mowing, yeah, we control stuff like that, and they don't.
The landowners don't have to worry about that. Okay.
They made a documentary on that.
Was there a, the application to zoning was for a variance, is that correct?
That's correct.
And that had to do with height?
Of the substation.
And the substation height variance was, I mean, was that something that was not in the ordinance that should have been for something like that? Did it have to do with like the height of the lines with getting to the 345 lines and that kind of thing?
Yes.
I haven't read it.
It was part of the new UDO, as you know, that was enacted in April 2025. And part of the language in the ordinance states it's a high restriction of 50 feet. The lightning mast on the substation will go over the 50-foot threshold, and therefore we had to file a variance for that.
Right. So, but, so the ordinance was likely created without knowledge of how these things are built, perhaps? I mean, it would seem reasonable to me. I mean, so the ordinance may need to look at as far as a change to that maybe for future projects like this.
Just for the substation, so not for the.
Not for the field, yeah, but just, yeah, for any substation, actually. I would assume that any, any power, you know, if we build a new nuclear facility or a coal facility or something, and there was a substation, and it has to be, I don't know where we got the numbers from, not high enough, which requires a.
You mentioned the economic development agreement with the $5 million in the abatement. When do you expect to want to discuss that? Like, and what part of the process, I guess?
That's timeline.
Yeah, more the timeline, I think.
No time like the present. I mean.
We shared drafts with you all, commissioners, first attorneys, so attorneys for the BZI, attorneys for the council, attorneys, commissioners, and we were supposed to meet with commissioners on Thursday, but Wednesday, and within, they, they've got a busy week, so we'll probably do that unfortunately, two, not this week, but in two weeks. But we're, I think part of the, because that meeting was to discuss the EDA.
Okay. So that's, the ball's rolling on that with them?
Yeah. But Nikki, our, our counsel, Nikki Schultz, advises that in order to apply for the abatement, we, there's paperwork that we need to file with you all, I believe. I think she, her office is working on that.
Okay.
We've also submitted our draft road use and decommissioning agreement.
We're going to let you handle all that, Scott, right?
All those agreements?
You won't leave us again, will you? Walk out of the room, everything goes on you.
Switch out my chair.
Any other questions?
No.
Well, thank you all.
Thanks very much.
Thank you. Appreciate your time. That concludes the end of our agenda. We next have public comment, if there's anyone who has questions from the public. Okay. I got a motion, is there a second? Oh, you got it. Oh, you just barely got it. I don't know about this.
I know.
Chad, this is Chief Deputy Sheriff's Office. I just want to, I talked to you about this, Ashley, just to let everybody else know, we did apply for a grant, I think we ended up putting in for $138,600 grant for LPR cameras through the Homeland Security Terrorist Preparedness Program. It is a 100% funded for three years, so just give you a heads up. We should know something by the end of the month if we got that grant.
What's it for?
LPR cameras to add 14 more LPR cameras to the three that we already have.
There's no match money?
No match, it's 100% funded for three years.
Okay.
What's LPR?
License plate readers.
I'm sorry, okay, yeah.
Hopefully, we'll know on the 28th, if 28th we got that. Evidently, nobody knew about it because nobody applied for it. There's only like three agencies, and it was capped at $150,000, but there's a little over $4 million available, so there's a pretty good chance we're going to get some money from it.
How many are existing now in the county?
We have three.
Hazel Bluff Road, I think there's a new one at Hazel Bluff.
Up on the north end, and we got one two, three, four, and 60.
Does that give like the owner's history? You know, any trouble or anything?
So all it does is, it'll alert us if there's a, and then, like if you're suspended right now, it'll send an alert to us. If a car is stolen, if the person's wanted, it sends us an alert, and shows which camera it's on. And then we can use it for investigations and stuff also. I've solved a couple burglaries that come in from other counties, that they've got LPR hits of the vehicles, no license plates on them, but it still takes a picture of it. They have suspect, they thought it was them, they called me, this was from Clark County, Illinois, on a tractor that was stolen, and they sent me a picture of the people, and I'm like, yep, that's it.
Does it just take a picture of motion, is it motion activated?
It's motion off of the vehicles, yes, and it goes clear down to pedestrians on bicycles.
Where does the data go? Is it stored on the device, or is it cloud?
It's through flock cameras, I don't, I don't have the answer for that.
I didn't know how you-
It runs through IDEX, through the state system.
But we're not responsible for paying for storage of all the information?
No, and it's only stored for 30 days, so it's every, if you got a case, you better get on there and save your pictures, because in 30 days, you know how I found that house. I thought they were saved forever, you know, I needed them for many days, and they were gone. But I think it'll be good for the county, to be able to enhance our investigations and stop these people that shouldn't be driving.
Thank you for that.
Hopefully, we get it, but I just wanted to let everybody know that we did apply for that.
Appreciate it, thank you. Any other public comment? Is there a second?
One second.
Thank you very much, have a good evening.